Hey, good evening. I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which would have been for January the 18th. So we're reconvening the January 18th meeting of the regular Commissioners, the Commissioners' meeting at this time. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
We do, we have a full quorum.
All right, thank you. Well, at this time, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation. Is there anyone, we would like to invite any one member of the audience to come forward and provide invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have anybody to volunteer?
I've been requested.
So you've been voluntold, then?
I've been also.
All right, sir.
Then we pray, and then we do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah, we'll do prayer first, and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
I understand. Our Father God who art in heaven, we thank you for this day, we thank you for our life, we thank you for the sunshine, we thank you for the rain. As we come today and gather to discuss your business, we pray that you give us the ability to speak as we need to. And Father, we pray that you keep us healthy day by day and do this and try to rid us of this coronavirus and keep our country straight. And let us lead and guide in your direction, which you are requesting, in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any members of law enforcement?
What?
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, Johnny.
Johnny, in the US Army. Thank you.
At this time, we'll recognize any members of law enforcement?
Danny Howe, Cleveland County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, Danny. At this time, we'll recognize any county department heads.
Martha Thompson, Disney County Attorney. Carrie Melton, Assistant County Manager.
Chris Martin, Land Office.
Sherry Lavender, Tax Department.
Cleveland Sheriff's Department.
They need a hand. We want to take it easy.
At this time, we seek a motion to adopt a proposed agenda or any items that need to be added to the agenda.
You know, I've been making motions to adopt the agenda as the...
Okay.
Motion to second to adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor indicate with saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. So next, we're to citizen recognition. Clerk, I mean, Madam Clerk, I believe you handed me one name, so you need to read that.
Yes, sir. The citizen recognition portion of the meeting is an opportunity for persons wishing to appear before the Commission to do so. Each presentation will be limited to three minutes. The Board is interested in hearing citizen concerns, yet speakers should not expect comment, action, or deliberation on subject matter brought up during this segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate county agency.
So we have one name for tonight, Nanette Lenhart.
Can you hear my hook? Hello, guys, gal.
Ms. Howe, name and address.
Oh, Nanette Lenhart, 2502 Parnell Drive here in Shelby, North Carolina. My concern is over the, and I tried to talk with Phyllis about it, she's trying to, you know, get it to a particular point. My concern is about the finances, and especially with Cleveland County Schools finances. And I was sharing with Phyllis that, you know, I downloaded the document, golly, about 400 something pages, and I think I found a one particular item, maybe page 394, that designates $6 million, and I'm pretty sure you guys may know that, $6 million something dollars to Cleveland County Schools. Is there any way that the taxpaying citizens can know where this went? You know, like what school, what item, like, I don't know if it's that PP protective masking thing, sanitizer, I don't know. And that's just my concern. I would just like some feedback. I know you guys can't respond probably, but that's my concern is, there's a lot of, I want the public to know, you know, we're taxpaying citizens, and if I'm not mistaken, you know, this county Commissioner is responsible to the taxpaying citizens. And please advise me, if I'm wrong on anything, tell me. But that's what I want to know first and foremost, and of course, I couldn't download 400 something pages of documents, but I'd like, you know, some feedback on that. You know, the finances for Cleveland County Schools, where it goes, how much, you know, to what school. And so I can give you my email address if you want it, some of you already know, and my phone number, and I'd just like some feedback, and that's it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, since it's here, we will direct him to the appropriate...
Agent?
Yes, sir.
Why don't Phyllis, you, her, make an appointment to sit down with Brian. Brian can explain it and have your finance guy there and answer her question.
Okay.
Ms. Nanette, I'll get with you.
Go with it, with it.
Ms. Brian, Brian will meet.
Ms. Nanette, I'll get with you after the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. This time, I'll call on Brian Epley, the County Manager, to present our consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several items of consideration following only one meeting the last two months, so bear with me as I work through it. Our first item of consideration is item A, which are minutes from both your October 5th and October 19th regular Commissioner meeting. Those are in your packet for review and consideration. Also, item B is going to be collections and reports for November and December from our Tax Administration Department. Ending November 2021 collections were at 63.75%, and ending December 2021 were at 76.38%, which is just over a half percent lower than where we were this time last year, but still certainly trending in a very highway, high performing way. Item C, also from Tax Administration, is your November and December monthly abatement and supplement reports. For November 2021, abatements totaled $60,282.27. Supplements totaled $73,799.91. And for the December report, abatements totaled $3,752.25, and supplements totaled $30,256.12. Item D is a request from our Tax Administration Office for relief of prior year vehicle tax. The cumulative total here would be roughly around $8,000, and this would be for tax, vehicle tax levies prior to 2012, 2013, when the state began the NCBTS title program. And at this point, the, we believe that the investment in the collections exceeds the return of what is collectible, and we need the Board of Commission to approve or consider allowing the tax collector to relieve those from our purview. Item E, considerations from the Health Department, this is Budget Amendment Number 25 on the year, a request to budget $250 in additional Nurse Family Partnership Funds that'll be used to help incentivize patients for participation. Item F, also from the Health Department, this is a request to budget $25 that were donated from Camp Creek Baptist Church, and they want those dollars to be used to purchase food for upcoming coalition meetings. Item G, also from the Health Department, Budget Amendment Number 27, I would say 27 and 28 are going to be very similar. Item G, Budget Amendment Number 27, is request to budget $510 in additional state grant funds that'll be used for the North Carolina Breast and Cervical Cancer Screening Program, and we'll use that to help facilitate and offset payments to outside vendors. Item H, very similarly, from a different funding source, $325 also to be used towards the North Carolina Breast and Cervical Cancer Control Program, and these funds, too, will be used to offset the cost of outside vendors. Item I, from the Sheriff's Department, it's Budget Amendment Number 29 on the year, and this is a request to budget $50,263 in donated funds, and the Sheriff's Office will budget these periodically to offset existing expenditures. Item J, Budget Amendment Number 30, also from the Health Department, state grant, request to budget $257,204 in additional COVID Vaccine Administration Funds, and we'll use these strategically for contracted services, things like free testing that we've been doing the last couple of Saturdays, additional medical supplies at PPE gear. Item K is from our Emergency Communications Department, this is a request to budget $110,120 of state number 1 dollars, and we'd like to use that for a capital purchase of a new state number 1 recorder system as our current one is aging out. Item L for consideration is from our Legal Department. As you're aware, this is the second reading of this consideration for decriminalization of certain ordinances. It was first read back at our December meeting, and per rules of procedure, in order to adopt an ordinance, has to be heard by the Commissioners twice. And this is to be compliant with new legislation passed by the General Assembly that provides certain criminal remedies for local ordinances. And so we, the goal of this is to become compliant with that legislation, but also to avoid making material changes to our local ordinances. Item M is from the Planning Department, this is a request to set a public hearing. The case number would be 2201, it's parcel 10480, which is located out on 1572 Long Branch Road. The petitioner is asking to rezone from light industrial to heavy industrial, and we're asking to set that public hearing on February the 1st, 2022, at the Commissioners' regular meeting. Item N, also from our Planning Department, is a request to consider allowing the City of Kings Mountain to join the County Historic Preservation Commission. Back in 2005, the county adopted an ordinance to create this Joint Historic Preservation Commission, and at that time, all towns except Kings Mountain signed an agreement to participate. They were maintaining their own commission, but have since dissolved that, and are now asking to join the primary county commission. And finally, for consideration, item O, also from the Planning Department, is a request from Popeful to ask the county to enter to an interlocal agreement that will allow us to apply an administrative minimum housing code in the city limits, or in the town limits. We have similar agreements with Bellwood, Longdale, Grover, Bulling Springs, and Kingsdale already. Your recently adopted land use plan encourages all towns to have a minimum housing code within their jurisdictions, and I would point out that the administrative time of our Planning Department staff would be an in-kind contribution. However, any construction, demolition, or capital costs will be paid by the town of Popeful. Mr. Chair, that concludes a link to consent. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
With that, Commissioners, you have been presented a consent agenda. Is there any discussion or questions that you may have?
No discussion, I make a motion we approve a consent agenda.
Second.
So we have a motion to second. All those in favor indicate with saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. So now we're on the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
After the public hearing has been opened, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposition will be asked to come forward and first state his or her name and address. All comments from the public are to be directed to the Board. There are no comments directed to other members of the audience. If a speaker has a question, that question is to be directed to the Chair. No one will be allowed to speak at the hearing more than once unless the Chair recognizes the speaker a second time for rebuttal of information brought forth after the speaker has spoken. The original presentation by a speaker will be limited to no more than five minutes. The rebuttal presentation will be limited to no more than three minutes.
So with that, we recognize Sherry Lavender, the County Tax Assessor, to come and present the small business incentive grants.
Good evening, Sherry. I have the first one for BNS Butler Properties. BNS Butler Properties has made an application for participation in the Small Business Investment Grant Program. This is related to renovation of their property located at 404 East Kings Street in Kings Mountain. Under the program, qualifying net new taxable investment of $50,000 to $1 million would be eligible for a grant of 50% of the county taxes paid on the taxable new investment for three years. Grant amount will be calculated on the current county tax rate of 54.75 cents per 100 net new taxable investment. The applicant has met the qualifying net new investment of $367,084 and is in compliance with the other guidelines of the program. Taxes have been paid, and there are no currently unresolved appeals. Administration of the grant requires public hearing, followed by action of the Commissioners to either approve or deny the grant.
Thank you. Before we open the public hearing, is there any questions or comments from the Commissioners? If not, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against small business incentive grant for BNS Butler Properties LLC, please come forward and state your name and address.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Steve Paget, 105 Monteith Lane, Shelby. You know my passion is small business. I think you know that by now, surely. If I remember correctly, I've said this several times, but I want to say it again, thank you for your support for small businesses. This is a very important supporting small business owner. We've got some small business owners that need all the help they can get. This COVID has really been tough on them. But I want to go all the way back to 2015, and I believe Commissioner Hutchins may be the only one left on the Board that was with me back in 2015, when we started the Certified Entrepreneurial Community Program for small businesses. And there are still signs at the Gaston and Cleveland County line and the Rutherford County line on 74, and there are signs at the Lincoln County line and Cherokee County line on 18 that say Certified Entrepreneurial Community. We still are focusing on entrepreneurs and small businesses, and I want to thank you very much for your support over the years that we have actually been able to help the small businesses. And this incentive grant is a special treat for a lot of them because they need any help that they can get, and the investment level between $50,000 and $1 million, that's a pretty good deal for Cleveland County, too. So I wanted to say thank you very much for your support, and also ask you to please consider this in a positive light and vote yes for this. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against the small business incentive grant for BNS Butler Properties LLC, please come forward and state your name and address. If not, we'll close the public hearing, and any questions or discussion by the Commissioners?
Just a comment. Like Mr. Paget said, this is to help the small businesses. We have been for large businesses, manufacturing, estate, so forth, give us some incentives, and we had nothing. So like, we've talked about it several times, we find that we got it, or we could approve it, and I think it's a great tool for the small businesses that receive it, not only for business, but farmers. I think that most of the grants that have been given out have been agriculture-related in the past, so it's good to see that we got businesses coming.
Anyone else?
I also support the small businesses, and at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we grant this to BNS Butler Properties.
I'd like to second that. We have a motion second to approve the small business incentive grant of BNS Butler Properties. All those in favor indicate with saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. We're on to number five, small business incentive grant for Thoroughbred Partners Ltd. Sherry?
Thoroughbred Partners Limited has made application for participation in the Small Business Investment Grant Program. This is related to renovation of their property located at 133 West Mountain Street in Kings Mountain. The applicant has a qualifying net new investment of $346,672 and is in compliance with the other guidelines of the program. Taxes have been paid, and there are no unresolved appeals.
Thank you, ma'am. Any Commissioners have any questions or comments from Ms. Lavender? So if not, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the small business incentive grant for Thoroughbred Partners Limited, please come forward and state your name and address.
Steve Paget, 105 Monteith Lane, Shelby, and in the interest of time, ditto with what I said a while ago.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against small business incentive grant for Thoroughbred Partners Limited, please come forward and state your name and address. Not, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions or discussion by the Commissioners?
I'm like Mr. Paget, my comment to you, work back to the other grant, that I'm glad that we got small businesses reaching out, and we can help them.
Anyone else?
If not, I make a motion we approve this grant.
I'll second.
So a motion second to approve the grant for Thoroughbred Partners Limited. All those in favor indicate with saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. So we're on to the next one. Ms. Lavender, again, we have small business incentive grant for White Investments of Shelby LLC.
To begin this one, I'd like to make an apology. There was oversight in 2020 where we failed to bring the investment before this Board, and I'd like to rectify that tonight by bringing both the 2020 and 2021 investment amount. White Investments of Shelby has made an application for participation in the Small Business Investment Grant Program. This is related to the renovation of their property located at 219 East Marion Street in Shelby. The applicant has a qualifying net new investment of $417,017 for 2020 and $548,707 for 2021. It is in compliance with the other guidelines of the program. Taxes have been paid, and there are no unresolved appeals. The grant application for the 2020 grant year was submitted timely by the taxpayer, but due to the COVID pandemic and a change in tax staff, it failed to be brought before the Board in a public hearing during the 2020 tax year. The omission was caught during the review of the 2021 application. Administration of the grant requires a public hearing, followed by action of the Commissioners to approve or deny.
Thank you, Ms. Lavender. Does any of the Board have questions or comments for Ms. Lavender before we open the public hearing? If not, the public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against small business incentive grant for White Investments of Shelby LLC, please come forward and state your name and address.
Steve Paget, 105 Monteith Lane, Shelby. Ditto with what I said earlier, and if y'all will allow me, I'm going to slip out a little early because I've got a webinar going on right now for small businesses, and I need to get back to the computer. Thank you very much, and I ask you again to vote yes. Thank you.
We appreciate your passion for small businesses.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against small business incentive grant for White Investments of Shelby LLC, please come forward and state your name and address. All right. Saying none, the public hearing is now closed. Any questions or discussion by the Commissioners?
Just the same comment. I'm glad that we've got the grant going, and our small businesses are taking advantage of it. That's what it's for.
And I'd like to thank Mr. White for all he does for the county and the leadership he's given in more than one area, but we appreciate it, and I make a motion that we approve this grant for 2020 and 2021.
Second. Motion second to approve the grant for both 2021 and 2020 and 2021. All those in favor indicate with saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the Planning Department, case 2124, request to rezone property at 527 Kizer Longdale Road from residential to neighborhood business conditional use for a recreational vehicle park. Mr. Martin?
Good evening, Board. We have two zoning requests for each night. The first is the request from Tyler Watts. He's asking to change the zoning of a 28, 29 acre parcel along Kizer Longdale Road from a residential to neighborhood business conditional district. The intent of this conditional rezoning is to use this parcel as a recreational vehicle park. This property is located, as I said, on Kizer Longdale Road. It's north of the town of Longdale and just north of the county, Cleveland County Water Plant, and sits along the First Broad River. You've got in your packet a site plan showing how the property would be developed, and what you'll see is you'll see that he's proposing four DRV sites, 20 treehouse yurt style of sites, and 10 primitive sites on the plan. We, staff has reviewed the site plan and the request, and we've determined that it meets all the criteria and standards of the RV ordinance. It has also been presented to the Emergency Management Department, and they had no comments as far as it being a negative impact or being a public safety hazard to the tenants within the park. The case was presented to the Planning Board. They recommended to approve the request, and they noted that although it's a spot zone, because all the properties in this area are also zoned residential, they felt like that this, changing this could benefit this community and the town of Longdale, and that it could work in conjunction with the proposed greenway along the First Broad River. They felt that the recreational style of use fits in this land use plan designation of rural preservation, and it just feels like a type of use that you'd find in this designation. I can answer any questions.
Members of the Board, do you have any questions or comments for Chris?
I think just a comment, looking over the site plan and where he's going with the new greenway facility that the water system is talking about putting in, I think in harmony with it, it's going to go home real well.
Anyone else? So if not, this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against case 2124, the request to rezone property at 527 Kizer Longdale Road from residential to neighborhood business conditional use for recreation vehicle, recreational vehicle park, please come forward and state your name and address.
Nanette Lenhart, 2502 Parnell Drive, Shelby. My question is, are some of these sites going to be permanent RV sites? That's it, just, you know, permanent, because in my thinking, RV is like temporary, and if I'm not mistaken, some of the sites at Moss Lake, they got booted out because they were living there as permanent, if that makes any sense.
Hello, I'm Tyler Watts, 1302 Barcliff Road, Shelby, North Carolina. I'm the applicant for this. Just to address the first question on the floor, this is not a temporary housing facility. This is more going to be to accommodate the greenway, and what we would like to be able to do is work in conjunction with the greenway to where, although it's, the greenway's going to be used for locals, we would love for people coming from out of town to have a place to possibly stay in the town of Longdale. Town of Longdale's somewhat near and dear to me. I grew up in Popeful, North Carolina, the adjoining town, so I went through there every day, going to Burns High School. There's an axed rolling place there. I know the owner of that place. I want to see it thrive. I want to see it do good. Most of you probably know I'm associated with the development going on at the Broad River Greenway, and that one's going very well, and this is a similar model, and my name's standing behind it, so, and I'm a local, so it will be ran correctly. The buildout you see is a total full buildout. We will go in conjunction with the greenway and how quickly they go. We will probably bring it in in phases of maybe five to 10 sites, and then continue to phase it in as we see the need for the community. We want to offer that, you know, to be able to have people to be able to kayak and use the greenway in conjunction with that. So it's not considered a living facility. We would expect it to be more of a weekend getaway type for residents from like a Thursday to Sunday type deal. That's all I've got to say, unless y'all have any questions for me. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against case 2124, request to rezone property at 527 Kizer Longdale Road from residential to neighborhood business conditional use?
About 20, 25 years ago, I canoed down that section of Broad River where the greenway's going to go, and the place is beautiful. And from what this gentleman just said, he's going to add to that. But I'm just wondering, what is this thread trail and rail trail that Shelby's put it in? Are they going to allow parky parks adjacent to their trails? Just a question.
Just a question.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against case 2124, request to rezone property at 527 Kizer-Londell Road from residential neighborhood business conditional use for a recreational vehicle park, please come forward and state your name and address.
The city has not discussed RV parks.
Come here. You need to come to the market.
The city, I'm David White, 1717 Arbor Way Drive. The city has not discussed any RV parks, but we are on the way with the rail trail, and it's coming right along, and if you visit other towns and other cities with rail trails, they have those. So that's all I want to say.
Thank you, David. Anyone else? Not, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions or discussion by the commissioners?
I would think this would be something great for that area, a good place for people to take vacations. I think it's, it sounds like a great idea to me.
I think in answering one of the questions, Chris, you might address it that we have rules in place that prohibit long-term stay in the RV parks.
Yes, sir. You're correct. The use of an RV as a permanent residence is prohibited by North Carolina Building Code and our local zoning ordinance as well. So, you know, the enforcement of that would fall between, or between our office and the inspections office.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Chris or any other questions or comments related to this planning request, rezoning request?
I make a motion, we approve.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve case 2124. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. So Chris, I think you're back up again for number eight. On the agenda is the Planning Department, case 2126, is request to rezone property at 955 Stony Point Road from restricted residential to residential.
Okay, so our next case is also a request to rezone property. The applicant is Wayne Smiley. He's also the property owner, and he's asking to rezone his property, which is about 11 acres, from residential to restricted residential. The difference in those two zoning districts are that basically the use of manufactured home parks, or manufactured home as a permanent residence. The residential district allows the use of double wides and single wides while the restricted does not. It only allows modular homes and site-built homes. And you can see, we have a zoning map showing the parcel. It's outlined in the black, and it's located along Stony Point Road, just east of Woodbridge and south of the New Camp Creek-Church Road intersection. The yellow color represents the restricted residential area, while the white color represents the regular residential. Both zoning districts would comply with the land use plan. Land use plan has this area designated as primary growth, so both of these districts provide uses that are consistent with that land use designation. We presented this to the planning board last week, and they voted four to two to recommend denying the application. Their comments were regarding spot zoning. They felt that this application, like the last one, was a spot zone, but they, they felt like the requested zoning district would only provide uses that benefited the landowner. So they recommend denial on this case. And I can answer any questions for this one.
All right. Board of Commissioners, you have any questions or comments for Chris?
I do, if I may.
Yes, sir.
In looking at the area up through there with changing to residential with, you know, the different type home to go in it, but how many homes in that area is out of compliance that's already got that particular type home that he's referring to?
Yeah, so, and we, staff has done a preliminary evaluation of this area, basically from the creek, which is the end of the restricted residential district, north towards the Zeb Klein Road area, and there were a number of properties that had a manufactured home along Stony Point Road in this area. And all of those would have been considered noncompliant.
Quite a few out of compliance.
Yes.
We run across this in several zoning issues, haven't we?
Yeah, we see this occasionally. It's hard to get a zoning district, a large zoning district that's perfect and has every use as being compliant.
Any other questions? Anything else? Chris?
I'd like to ask, can we ask staff to reevaluate all these other ones so that we can make them more compliant, and would, that way it would lend itself to approving this request?
Certainly. Staff can definitely proceed with that.
All right. If we, if we can, if we can do that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this request. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm too far.
Any other questions? Keep that for later, though.
All right.
This time we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against case 2126, this is a request to rezone property at 955 Stony Point Road from restricted residential to residential, please come forward and state your name and address.
Wayne Smiley. At the present, I don't really know what my address is. We sold our farm, which is directly across Stony Point Road, right in there. And we decided we would go across the road and put us up a double wide mobile home in there, and hopefully live out the rest of our life there. Unbeknownst to us, sometime in the past, this whole area has gotten zoned, rezoned to restricted residential. And I don't know how that happened without me and the people around there knowing about it. I've talked to some of the neighbors. None of them know about it. They're surprised when I say that you know your property's zoned restricted residential. I may be wrong, but it was, I was under the impression that there were supposed to be ads run in the papers, signs posted, and honors notified when things like this took place. I lived in that area for the last 60 years, and the only one I knew of about rezoning was some years back, Woodbridge decided they wanted to zone everything over there, like the Woodbridge Homewatch Association. And of course, we didn't like that idea, so we thought that. And I don't really understand why the people aren't allowed to own property and they can't put a double wide or a single wide mobile home on there. Now I realize that some people have a lot more money than others. I've been in kind of both places, and it just doesn't seem fair to, to do this to people. Some people can't afford a half million dollar house. And I don't think that people should be restricted like livestock, where they can't be in this area unless they're a certain type. The whole country is a mix, and I feel like that we should be allowed to put us a double wide on that property that we've owned for quite a few years and farmed over there for 37 years. So we, we need a place to live. We've been looking since April. Did you find something? Did you like the next day it's sold? You didn't get a chance to get it? And we, that's why we decided to go over there, because we couldn't find anything that we wanted and able to buy. And then we come up against this, and this, it just doesn't seem right to me that you should begrudge a man to live in a decent house on his own property. We're not talking about putting up a shack over there. We're buying, want to buy a new double wide mobile home. You might not know, the biggest difference in a double wide and a modular is they pull the double wide in, set it on a foundation, and take the wheels and axles and tongue off it. On a modular, you can buy the same thing in a modular. We can buy a double wide or a modular, same floor plan, same house. They bring a modular in, they take it off of the frame and set it on the foundation. And that's the basic difference. By that, it costs you $7,000 more for a crane, pick it up and set it over there. Among a few other things, it's a lot more expensive. So that's my case on, on the plan. I think this whole thing, of all this one being zoned, from what I've been able to find out, there was a couple of people, and I may be wrong on this, I may be speaking out of turn, but I was, a couple of people didn't want some things happening, and they got it all changed. And like I say, I've been over there for 36 years, and I don't know how this came about, because if it had, if it had been done like it's supposed to have been done, I wouldn't have known about it, and I would have been standing up here then when it was going on. But that's another story in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against case 2126, which is the request to rezone property at 955 Stony Point Road from restricted residential to residential? If so, please come forward and state your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. What questions or discussions did the commissioners have?
Well, I would like to agree with Commissioner Westine and say there's a lot of nonconforming areas out there, and that whole area to me doesn't kind of fit the restrictive residential, and I think that's something we need to look into. But if no one else has any comments, I'd like to make a motion that we accept to rezon, to residential.
Do the rezoning? Did we do the rezoning?
We do the rezoning to residential and then have them look into this.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion?
But I've got a question, too.
Okay.
Okay, he was the first. We got a motion to second.
We got a motion to second.
But you just did a question.
He kept talking about the difference in the module home, home frame and off frame. Is he going to put a double wide or is he going to put a module home frame home?
He's putting a double wide for them to retire.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone want to oppose? Motion carries. I have a question for clarity from Brian. Do we need to make that a formal motion?
Motion to.
For you guys to look into that, or you have enough to?
Yeah, we're comfortable with the direction that the board takes.
All right. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is shell building number four, installment financing. Mr. Epley?
Thank you, Commissioner Gordon. Just a couple slides to finalize, or ask the board to consider finalizing some installment financing that would be applied towards our fourth speculative shell industrial building. Similar to the small business incentive grants that the board approved earlier tonight, the Local Development Act, which is General Statute 158.7, allows for the process of a partnership that's been completed now four times with the county and the city of Shelby to speculatively purchase property and develop that property with utilities, ultimately constructing industrial space that we are then able to market, you know, to, to companies that are looking to expand or relocate. And we offer that speed to market of them being able to establish a, maybe it's an east coast presence or distribution facility or manufacturing facility, but it really gives our economic development folks a competitive edge. And I think that's why we've been so unprecedentedly successful in job creation, tax base creation, really over the 10 years. When you look at the state of North Carolina, we've been, we've been overwhelmingly successful in growing our tax base, creating jobs. Even through pandemic, we were able to grow our labor force by about 1,500 jobs, and that's something that I believe is directly attributable to the type of policy that the commissioners have followed through this shell building process. This particular shell building is very similar to our previous three. It's roughly 100,000 square feet, expandable to 200. We think, again, estimated completion time December of 2022. This would be a continued partnership with the city of Shelby. The city of Shelby would act as the project manager for construction, and the county acts as the financing vehicle. At your December 20th meeting, you did the preliminary actions to establish public purpose, establish our affordability analysis, and when you approved our application to the local government commission, the local government commission obviously being the fiscal oversight body for all county and city governments in North Carolina. Since that point, we have solicited bid proposals from financing lending institutions and evaluated those, evaluated those. And then tonight before you, what we are asking is for the approval of those financing documents with Truist being the preferred lender at a 10-year taxable rate of about 2.39%. That debt service would not be due until originally February of 2023. If history repeats itself, and we're highly confident that it will, we'll pay the building off with no prepayment penalties prior to ever making the first debt payment. So the action that we're asking the board to consider tonight is authorizing the staff to finalize the financing transactions with Truist Bank, as well as finalizing complete all of the due diligence reckon, associated with the interlocal agreement with the city of Shelby. And you can see here just from our previous meetings, I would remind the board that it was a not to exceed 8.5 million, and again, that 2.39 term with a 10-year taxable rate. So the items before you are to approve or deny the installment financing contract with Truist, and then authorize staff to complete the transaction and close those documents probably in mid-February.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions or comments from the board for Brian? All right. Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against Shell Building Four installment financing, please come forward and state your name and address.
David White, 1717 Arbor Way. It's so funny. I wasn't planning on saying a word tonight, but I just want to get up here from city council. I want to thank you guys. I mean, you guys have been great. We had, the city and the county have done so much together. And let me tell you a little bit, we had a girl come from Raleigh to talk to us at a retreat the city had, and they, and we start talking about the city and the county and the relationship that we've got, and she said, what we've got is rare. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against Shell Building Four installment financing, please come forward and state your name and address?
Robert Williams, 814 East Stagecoach Trail in Fallston. I looked at this on, on the internet, the reasoning and all of that, and, and I know the, the history looks pretty good on our shell buildings, but somewhere, you know, the price is considerably more on this one, and it just reminded me of Bernie Madoff and his Ponzi scheme. And it just reminded me of Bernie Madoff and his Ponzi scheme. Everybody that got in early, you know, hey, things looked well, but sooner or later, you know, you could do more and more and more. And, you know, it come crashing down. A lot of people lost a lot of money. If you don't sell this property soon, I know you're taking precautions, you'll have a loan set there to, to pay the bills, but if nobody buys it at that price, every bit of success of the previous three buildings is gone. So I would, I would just recommend you guys look at this a little closer and just think, we've got a problem now. Building construction is high, jobs are low, the economy is uncertain. It's, the risk is a lot more now than it has been in the past. And I just recommend you hold on. That's my two cents.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against the Shell Building Four installment package, please come forward and state your name and address. If not, we'll close the public hearing. Questions or discussion by the commissioners?
It's my understanding there's already a couple of firms maybe questioned, may ask some questions about this building. Is that correct?
I think it is more likely than not that the building is sold before construction is complete, yes.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, I know I have a piece of property in Kings Mountain that's on the market for over a week now and we've had five showings and two offers already. So I think the, right now, the economy is good. Whether it, it may slow down somewhere down the road, but between now and the time we can get this building built, I, I wouldn't be too concerned about.
That's residential, is it?
No. No, I have commercial.
Is it an eight and a half million dollar property?
Well, it's not quite that much.
I too want to say that the county appreciates the relationship with the city and, uh, are we ready to make a motion now?
Uh, yeah, we entertain a motion whenever you guys are ready.
I would like to make a motion that we approve it.
I'll second.
Uh, motion second to approve the Shell Building Four financial, installment financing. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries. Now we're on to the regular agenda. Lucas Jackson for the audit presentation. Think you guys have some money? Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Okay. Commissioners. Sir. You got it. Just over there.
Thank you for the opportunity for allowing me to present this evening. I have a few slides to recap the annual audit process along with some highlights from last fiscal year. Following these slides, I'm going to turn it over to Alan. Unfortunately, he's not, he wasn't allowed to be with us this evening, but we're glad to have him, at least virtually. So we'll turn it over to him at the end for some required communication on his behalf. So let's see. Maybe.
Thank goodness IT's here.
Here we go.
Oops.
Here we go. Okay, so we always like to start with why do we have an audit? General statutes require all local governments in North Carolina to contract with an external independent audit firm. Cleveland County has contracted with Thompson, Price, Scott &amp; Adams, which we have Alan on the Zoom there, to conduct the June 30th, 2021 audit. Like to say, this is our fourth year with TPSA. They've been excellent to work with and a pleasure, so we look forward to working with them in future years. So just an overall timeline of the audits, about, it's about a year-long process. Begins in February. We present the audit contract to you guys following your approval. That goes through final fieldwork in September and we ultimately submit the audit report in October or November to the LGC for approval. So a little bit on this particular audit from last year, a little bit different. We performed most of it remotely with the COVID onset. We had to do a lot, you know, the scheduling of staffing, you know, their firm would have people out, we would have people out. So it actually worked well, been able to do a lot of it remote. We had seven major DSS and grant programs, which is pretty significant for a county our size. We submitted on time to the LGC. We actually submitted before October 31st, which is, which is a big deal. I, yeah, there's probably a handful of counties in North Carolina that actually met, you know, that, that deadline. We also submitted to GFOA for the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the eighth year. So we had some property tax growth, you know, for the fifth consecutive year aligned with a strong collection rate of 98.6%, which drove up our property tax revenue for our general fund. And we had strong local, local option sales tax. So we had some changes at state level with regard to online sales taxing. So with that and, you know, the economy boom, you know, we, we experienced quite a bit of sales tax growth. So here you'll see this is general fund revenue and expense for the fifth consecutive year. We've had incremental increases in both our revenue and expense. So you'll notice at 2021, you're gap there, which generates your increase in unassigned fund balance. So we ended the year at 19.3%, which follows in line with Commissioner's strategic goal of maintaining at least 18% of unassigned fund balance. So our employee health fund, you know, had another great year. So our incentivized programs, employee wellness programs have really driven down our monthly premium claims and costs. So that's saving the county money just for, you know, providing that program and keeping our employees healthy. So our solid waste fund had another great year. You know, they've exceeded, you know, the revenues over their expenditures and continue to provide a, you know, a great service to the community. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions before turning it over to Alan.
Any questions of Lucas before we turn this over?
Mr. Johnson, I think we're ready for you. If you can want to share your screen.
Alan, you can take it away at any time.
Okay, I apologize. My tone, my hearing is not as good as I wish it was. So we appreciate you allowing me to do this virtually. I've had some health issues this week and a couple of other things. Appreciate your kindness, don't want to be contagious to anybody. The main thing you hire us, an outside audit firm, to do is issue an opinion on the financial statements as a whole. We did issue an unmodified report, which is a quote unquote clean report. There are a couple of things I do have to read, kind of the headlines, just to make sure I'm in compliance. There were no significant audit findings, no difficulties encountered in performing the audit, no uncorrected in this statements, no disagreements with management. Management did provide us with a representation letter dated October 29th. Were unaware that management consulted with any outside accountants, et cetera. There were really no other findings or issues. We had a couple of small comments. One, we're not big fans of P cards, but that doesn't mean they're not a good thing. Two, just for the board purposes and, and management purposes as well, the LGC may in the past have issued unit letters, they will no longer do that. Whatever we say in this presentation would be considered that. There are no comments that you have to respond to, so that's a good thing from a board standpoint. Management, finance officers, department heads have been incredibly cooperative, did a great job. There were three small technical findings in Medicaid that we've issued in the back of the report. There were no question costs associated with any of that. From a future standpoint going forward, from the 63022 year will be the first year of GASB 87, which is the lease standard that your finance officer and management team are on top of, but it will change some of the presentation of the government-wide statements. It is a lot of work and so they will be putting in a lot of effort to try and get there. From a management standpoint on that, it won't really change a lot of how you run the, the county and budget, et cetera, but it does change some of the presentation. On the fund balance, you, you obviously saw the increase year over year, about 4.3 million up to 47.6 million, but great numbers there. Your overall debt declined over 2 million. Your unavailable fund balance is in great shape at 12 million, so fund balance available as a percentage is clicking right along with where your percentages hope to be. Your revenues over and under expenses before transfers in the general fund and solid waste were both solid at seven and a half million dollar increase in the general fund, $100,000 increase in solid waste. Your cash continues to grow overall in the general fund at 43 million. In solid waste, it's the highest it's been in any of the five years at 3,987. Your property taxes have remained steady over the five-year period that we look at. The collection percentages are strong, as Lucas said. So from a, from our perspective, from an audit perspective, the county's in great shape financially, compliance-wise, they did a good job. We're very pleased. We issued an unmodified report on both the financial and compliance audits and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have of me at this point and anytime in the future. And again, I apologize, I was not able to be there in person tonight.
All right, thank you, sir. Board, do you have any questions for Alan or, or Lucas?
Just like to thank Lucas and the staff for all the hard work. This can't be easy and it sounds like you got a great point.
I certainly appreciate it.
Yeah, Brian, if you could, could you share? I think you told me that this was, so Lucas talked about the date was well ahead of the date, but did you not also say that this was the first report submitted?
Yeah, so similar to, to, for profit accounting, typically 90 days after the year end will be when a report's due. Over the last four years now, and Alan can speak to this, because of compliance changes, because of pickups, the government commission has continued to push that date back as far as December for reports to be turned in, primarily because of changes in compliance, mostly at social services, testing requirements and so forth. But historically, October 31st has been that deadline. And so when he tells you, you have a representation letter dated October 29th, which is well ahead of the, the theoretical deadline for a county government in North Carolina in these times is unprecedented. And I, and, and I'm very proud of our team for getting it in there and certainly if not the first, I think Thompson Price may be the first audit you guys submitted, but certainly maybe one or two others in the state that, that made it by that deadline. That I think just shows the proactive nature of, of our team and how hard they've worked. 500 invoices is a lot to, uh, to prepare and go through. Certainly staff challenges with COVID, it's a big deal. Remote work isn't, isn't hard, but, uh, you know, to be, to be recognized as one of the first, if not the first, is a, is a huge deal.
So thank you, Alan. Hope you get better soon.
I appreciate it very much and again, thank you for your kindness on tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Alan.
Lucas, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, on to the next item, we have a whole list of board appointments. Madam Clerk?
Board, we will go through these relatively quickly.
The first one is Board of Health?
Yes, we're going to go through these relatively quickly. Our first one is the Cleveland County Board of Health. At this time, you will need to appoint six people to serve a three-year term set to expire December 31st, 2024.
It's the pleasure of the board for board appointments for Board of Health.
I would like to nominate Heather Bridges-Moore, Henry Gilmore, Robert Miller, Rodney Whitstein, Deanna Lovelace, Lawrence, I'm sorry, Deanna Lawrence and Kail Mead to serve on the county board.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion second to appoint the list of names that Commissioner Bridges read off. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion carries. So now we're on to the Cleveland County Restorant Preservation Commission.
Historic, yes, historic preservation. As you know, this board is, is struggling, so the addition of the Kings Mountain Joint Commission will help tremendously. At this time, you have the list of applicants in front of you. They have been vetted by staff. You'll need to appoint one person for a three-year term set to expire December 31st, 2024.
Pleasure of the board.
I'd like to make a motion that we nominate Margaret Hahn.
Second.
Second.
A motion second, all, any discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Anyone opposed? The next board is the Cleveland County Library Board of Trustees.
Uh, you have the list of applicants in front of you. You will need to appoint one person for a three-year term, again expiring December 31st, 2024.
Pleasure of the board.
I nominate Margaret. How do you pronounce her last name?
I said Hahn. I'm not sure my, but I can see.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We're on to number 14. On the agenda is the Cleveland County Nursing Home Advisory Committee.
Uh, you will need to appoint one person for a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2024.
I'd like to nominate Patsy Harrison.
I'll second you.
Motion second to nominate the name listed. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We're on to number 15, the Cleveland County Veterans Advisory Board.
Yes, last board. Board, this is a follow-up from our work session that we had where we changed some of the boards, citizen advisory boards. So when we, you make these appointments, you will need to indicate which specific seat that your appointments fill. And you have the list, the list of applicants in front of you. They have all been vetted by staff and would qualify. You'll need to appoint three people for a three-year term set to expire December 31st,
I'll make a motion that we fill the position of Commissioner with Johnny Hutchins and as our veteran from one of the branch services, Emmanuel Hunt Jr. And as an at-large, Arthur Gordon.
Okay.
I'll have motion second to appoint the three names that Commissioner Whitstein read and second to that, all those in favor, or is any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying, or indicate by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any commissioners that may have a, a report of anything or any discussion? Anybody have anything to report? All right, here none, staff, Brian, you, anything? All right, with that then, we're at the end of the agenda. So our next meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners will be held Tuesday, February the first at 6:00 PM here in the Commissioner's Chambers. With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Set moved.
So I guess that's a motion second, all in favor, so. Indicate by saying aye. Anyone opposed? That's it, we'll see you on February 1st.